Okay, Commissioners, we are going to move to the, back to the public hearing calendar. We're on item number seven, which is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number sixteen three nine five four. It's thirty-eight Green Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, a store and warehouse building with French and Italianate-style elements designed by Griffith Thomas and built in eighteen sixty-seven. The application is to construct a rooftop addition. And this is zoned M one dash B.
Good morning. Victor Tamanik, Preservation Staff. This proposal is to construct a two-story with bulkhead rooftop addition. This is the photo of the building. The mock-up is constructed in this photo. You'll notice that it's not visible from either the primary streets. There's been sort of work at both facades, so there's nothing being proposed for either the facades right now. It is minimally visible from select vantage points. They're all from pretty far distances, and the architects are here to go into their detail.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for, thank you for hearing this application and for the glory of this weather. This is thirty-eight Green Street, and it is a rooftop addition. My name is Matt Burman from Workshop A to E. I'm going to walk you through the project. So far, you've seen this building a number of times, and you've seen both forty-two and fifty. We came before you for a storefront renovation that was approved. We've also, we've also cleaned up and restored all three buildings. So these are current photos of the actual, the actual building. Just to orient you where the building is, you can see this is thirty-eight Green Street here, here, this is the Grand Street facade, here, and here. This is the rooftop as it exists today. This is sort of spinning around the roof. This is the Green Street facade coming around the corner. You can see the tall water tower, the Grand Street facade with the pediment, and then coming back around. So that's across the street. Just in terms of precedent, there are a number of two-story additions in the Soho Cast Iron District. We've identified all of them here with as many of this certificate of occupancy, or certificate of appropriateness numbers as we can find. Many of them are sort of your typical stucco two-story additions with, you know, sliding glass doors and that sort of thing. None of them are visible from the street. All the ones that were shown you here are not visible from the street. So there are three things that I want to talk about in terms of how we arrived at what we're doing. One is the massing development. The mass is the architectural language, and the final is the materials. For massing development, we really took the approach of limiting visibility as much as possible. So in terms of the massing design, we took the zoning allowance of the transfer of air rights and the zoning footprint, it's about eighty-five hundred square feet, and we started slicing that back based on visibility. So this is the zoning envelope, and these are the cuts we made to achieve this, this language and this zoning massing. So like we said, this is not visible from the street, from most vantage points. We've also taken this addition and recessed it into the top floor. So this is the existing building. We've lowered this roof, dropped it down, and we've pocketed this addition down as low as possible to maintain a comfortable ceiling right here and reduce that ceiling height. You can also see just from the sort of slicing diagram how we've sliced off any of the visible parts. This is the construct that is up on the rooftop today. Like Victor said, it is not visible from any of the adjoining streets, and you'll see that here. These are all of the different vantage points. We've taken photographs, this view, and then an enlarged view here. And when you're sort of looking right up here, this is thirty-eight Green Street here. This is thirty-eight Green Street here, and this is thirty-eight Green Street here. And this is the one point that Victor was talking about, where there's a tiny sliver of one of the iron rails that is visible from this point, and that is this point right here. And it is visible for about two or three steps down the sidewalk. As you're walking around, the construct is still up. You're certainly welcome to take a look. In terms of the architectural concepts, what inspired us the most was this idea of just simply the rhythm and repetition that's in Soho. When we step back and ask some of these kind of simplest understanding of Soho, it's just that simple idea of rhythm and repetition. So we took the rhythm and repetition of thirty-eight Green Street, looked at the unit, the window bay of the unit, transformed that bay into a new window type, applied that to our mass, and iterated that through the structure. So you can see that closely in the model. It is the same bay, just repeated all the way through. And you can see that here. The second component was just the idea of shadow and the way that you create shadow in layers in the historic district. We wanted to do the same thing, so in the iteration of the window bay, we started playing with that geometry and peeling it back to create a shadow condition that was very much inspired by the existing building. The way that the existing building and the new addition work is, this is the top floor, the fifth floor of the existing building. This is the first floor of the new addition, the sixth floor. You can see how it steps back. There's a transfer stair and a transfer elevator. Then you get to the second floor of the new addition, and then finally the rooftop of the new addition. These are the elevations, existing elevation, proposed elevation. You can see the new addition. Again, you can see the way that it cuts back. Existing elevation, new elevation, and the section. The section tells probably the best story, where you can see the existing building. The elevator in the existing building is pushed all the way toward the front wall, so we have the elevator coming up to the fifth floor. Then we have a transfer elevator, a transfer floor, and the elevator continues up to the new addition. Stair, this stair continues all the way up, and then the existing stair also continues all the way up. Just a detailed section, we've included that in our package as well. The materials are very simple. It's an aluminum, painted aluminum panel, they're kind of a finish, something like a Lucavon or a Centria panel, and glass. And the glass will have a protective finish on it. In terms of materiality, the third part of the discussion, we were really looking at the materiality that you typically find on rooftops, and it's obviously, you know, it's not unexpected. For us, it was about looking at the geometries and the language that you find here, the language that you find just in terms of metallic surfaces, obviously, things like that, and a lot of the kinds of detritus in the district garden spaces that are on rooftops, thinking about a lot of this stuff, thinking about the glass, the articulation of the glass. This is frankly what inspired that broken window panel, the sort of triangulation of the window panel, and ultimately that led to this rooftop addition. So this is the rendering. You can see that's actually this facade we're looking at right here. This is the Green Street facade, the Green Street rendering, this is the Green Street rendering, the Green Street facade. We photomontaged it into place, so you can actually see what it looks like. Totally, we wanted to pick a color that was really going to blend with the rooftops and blend with the language around it and sort of be an extension of the existing building. Ultimately, it's a very simple structure based on a lot of the principles and concepts that we found in the building. That's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Can you tell me what the floor-to-floor heights are of the two additions that you have on top?
Twelve feet.
That's twelve feet clear, twelve feet floor to floor?
Twelve feet four to four.
And is this build, is it, is this going to be used for commercial use?
Commercial use.
Okay.
Yes, the whole building is commercial use, non-residential.
Okay. Questions? Any questions?
I saw it.
Model's beautiful. Why don't we take testimony, and then we can have further discussion? We have speakers on this item. Daniel Coes.
My name is Obie Benz. I've been a resident of thirty-three Green Street across the street since nineteen eighty-one. I'm a filmmaker, artist, I have an AIR. Not Daniel Coes, Daniel Coes is our architect. He was the partner of Larry Bogdanow, who you may have known for years, and has done work on our building. So I'm going to read his letter, if he's on his way, but he's not here. We are thoroughly against this, by the way, all of us. And actually, let me, let me, well, should I read my own statement first? I'm Obie Benz.
Well, you should read your statement to the record.
I don't, I don't have a statement, I'm going to just talk.
Okay, you can talk, that's fine. You have three minutes, so go ahead.
We received no notice of this whatsoever. I saw this, the orange stuff go up. I sent emails on November fourth, November tenth to the community board. I talked fully on the phone, who promised that he would let me know when this came up. We were not notified, and we learned later that it had gone before Landmarks for Sean Sweeney and then before the community board. We have no input whatsoever to any of this. The architect, Daniel, called Landmarks in the second week in November and was told that it's not on the agenda. And normally it takes months to get onto an agenda, so we were completely shocked that this had gone both through the community board to you. So neighbors have had no input into this whatsoever. This is adding three stories essentially to a five-story brick building. It's completely out of character with the neighborhood, the very concept that Landmarks would look at this photograph and think that this is in keeping with the historic landmark cast iron neighborhood is unbelievable. And even though maybe your attitude is just to do it from the street, from a pedestrian standpoint, but this will ruin the entire self of Soho's image forever. In other words, as a filmmaker now, movies are constantly shot down here. This, we will not be able to shoot with this thing in southern Soho. It is visible from many locations, as you hear from the second speaker who's speaking. Are these representations accurate of the numbers? I would love to have it be checked. My understanding is that it's supposed to be a twenty-foot setback. If you look on their plans themselves, at one point it's eleven, another point it's nine for that fifth floor. And there's a question of those fins that stick out. So where are the measurements coming from? Do the measurements come from the wall with the fins sticking out? How far do the fins stick out? And again, what point do the fins have in buildings in Soho? Ask yourself, if you're responsible for maintaining Landmarks integrity in New York City, to what extent do you think the fins in this shaped building is appropriate for Soho? I tried to have my own plan approved for a single normal penthouse in my own building, which is within FIR, was denied by Landmarks three years ago. So for me, as a resident, to be denied and have this commercial structure to be able to draw three floors, unbelievable to me. So I would like to, I would like to know actually what the intended uses. It looks to me like a party space, an entertaining space. I don't know what it might be. But we have not had an opportunity to ask, ask these questions or receive answers, and I think that this hearing, if this, I've seen you approve everything. So I'm frankly shocked, and to my mind, with the detail that you're talking about, those lintels over top of doorways.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Wow. Wow. So I guess I've been heard, right? Okay, well, let me read Daniel Coes' statement.
Okay, so you're not Daniel Coes', I'm sorry, what is your name?
I'm Obie Benz.
I'm sorry?
I'm Obie Benz.
Oh, okay, Obie Benz.
Yeah, I'm the president, we'll come up across the street. I should, I should tell you the parents that I did.
Okay, if you can read Daniel Coes' statement to the record.
Okay. Even though it may not be able to be seen from the street, it can be seen from many neighborhood residents, and it is not in keeping at all with the spirit or feel of the landmark neighborhood. The buildings are built almost full to site, and it has been the directive of Landmarks to avoid removing historic fabric from these antique buildings. Is any part of the building being removed to reallocate floor area to this rooftop addition? The corner building is built almost full to site. Thus, a floor area multiplier of five, which is what is allowed and what keeps Soho's five-story site, which is site times five, would yield a five-story building. We object to the available floor area from the rear yard of Forty Green Street, which is the adjacent building to the north, being relocated to the corner building, which is thirty-eight, which ordinarily not exceed five stories. This is inconsistent with the historic building type of this historic neighborhood. There is a required twenty-foot setback. Are the street ends of the fins on the wall behind this setback dimension? The scale of the proposed addition does not fit the scale of other rooftop elements found in the historic district. The proposed addition should be scaled back and distributed along the two twelve, which he says is one oh one plus one ten, linear feet of the frontage on Green Street in an attempt to keep it appropriate in the context of the roof state. Modern rooftop additions made me a way of life, and some have been well done in the context of the historic cast iron district. This one does not draw on the rich history, scale, and material used in the character of the neighborhood. The allocation of floor areas is a legal issue for the building department, but the approval of the location and character within the historic district is in the purview of Landmarks. Clustering it in the corner, even if it cannot be seen from many locations in the street, is objectionable to the neighbors who founded this area. Advocate its landmark status and will have their five-story neighborhood overtaken by this addition. So if you guys make a decision about this today, that's going to be very disappointing.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. One of the defining features of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District is the culmination of cast iron into fabulous pressed metal cornices. These monumental terminations sculpt the Soho street experience into a cornice skyline, and this overscaled addition would effectively erase these defining edges from number thirty-eight as well as its neighbors. HDC feels that this addition is large enough to be its own building, and its reflective materiality will call attention to itself. In short, it will be visible from everywhere. If an addition is to be built that is permitted to be visible, it should establish a working relationship to the building it occupies and embrace the context that it sits within. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nicholas De Bru.
My name is Dwayne Andrews. I'm with the law firm, Cozen O'Connor. Nicholas De Bru was on his way but didn't make it in time, so I'm going to read his letter into the record and submit it. Dear Madam Chair, I am a sixteen-year resident of Soho and received my graduate degree in architecture from Columbia University School of Architecture and Planning in nineteen ninety-four. I'm on the board of directors of our building and have been asked to attend this meeting. We have gotten several, we have several issues with the proposed project in thirty-eight Green Street and the process by which it has gotten this far. First, as a resident, I am outraged that neither I nor any of the neighbors adjacent to this project ever received a single notice, nor were notices posted at our door as they have been with every other project even several shovels away. We were not notified about any community board meeting and only discovered this meeting today after having hired an attorney. Even with their help, we only received the LPC package shortly before Thanksgiving, and all of a sudden it is here less than two weeks later. Having been a part of a number of projects in Soho, the speed of approval is astonished. Second, the package that was submitted is, in my opinion, not truthful. They claim it has no visual impact. However, within fifteen minutes, without trying very hard, I was able to see this proposal from several adjacent streets. Even with scaffolding, it would be more visible when the street scaffolds come down. I was able to see this project from Mercer, Spring, and Bloom Streets on Green, from Mercer and from Broadway. We have pictures attached to this letter. Third, the proposal is outrageously out of character with the fantastic Soho cast iron legacy. The proposal looks more like an alien spacecraft landed in the heart of Soho. Additionally, the scale of the project is completely out of keeping with the modest and elegant roof scape of Soho. The proposal will rise a total of three stories with the bulkheads. Many one-story additions have been done this way in a way that LPC has proved in the past and have added positively to the character of Soho. This, on the other hand, is a monstrosity and avoiding the need to spend time developing a compelling design. Fourth, the current and past landlords of these purely commercial buildings have a history of not doing the right thing. For example, they utilize substandard equipment for air conditioning that has been illegal and cited numerous times by DEP, requiring huge expenditures of time and energy on behalf of the residents in my building to get them to shut down one at a time. This raises our concern that the project as executed will also negatively impact the neighboring buildings. Lastly, there is a good deal of telecommunications equipment currently on the roof which will be displaced. Where will it go? Will they be adding more? I do not see why residents have to suffer for purely commercial need. The process of approval through the community board was neither transparent nor thorough. It is our hope that the same rigor and attention to detail that is typical of LPC review is applied to this deceptive application. We respectfully ask that you turn down this application and consider one that is more in keeping with the architectural history and character that have made Soho what it is.
Thank you. Are you Dwayne Andrews? Yes, all right. Is Nicholas De Bru here as yet, or he's not here? Nicholas De Bru, are you going to read his statement?
I just have, no, that was Nicholas.
Oh, that was his. And, okay, so you're the next speaker, Dwayne, yes, Dwayne Andrews.
Yes, so again, Dwayne Andrews, law firm, Cozen O'Connor. We represent the neighbors at ninety-six Grand Street. The neighbors are frustrated, as stated before in Nicholas De Bru's testimony, that they didn't receive any notification of this public hearing or the community board public hearing, and as such, we request that the commission leave the record open for additional comment. The proposal is inappropriately styled and considerably large in scale. The photos in Nicholas De Bru's testimony clearly demonstrate that the proposed project is more visible from the street than the submission by the applicant suggests. The applicant seeks to take advantage of the height of the building, which prevents visibility from the immediate area around the building, but this would have a significant impact on the historic district because it is visible from multiple vantage points. The characteristics of the historic district and the ornamentation of the parapets and roof sapes need to be taken into account. Even a one-story addition would be problematic, but if there is to be any addition at all, then it needs to be appropriate to the historic district, and while we recognize that there should be a clear delineation between new and old, that doesn't mean that there are no standards at all. We urge the commission to direct the applicant to look back to the drawing board and come back with a modest and appropriate design on appropriate notice to the neighboring buildings and the community board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, we've received a recommendation from Community Board Two Manhattan. They note where is the rooftop addition, an interesting design, will be minimally visible from the street, only from a great distance. Therefore, it's resolved that Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. I think since the issue was raised at the public hearing about notice, Mark, do you want to just speak on the issue of notice? Because there's community board notice requirements which are not within our purview, and then we have our own requirements.
That's correct. The Landmarks Law does not require notification to local communities, and the commission works through the community board and, as a policy matter, asks that applicants for certificates of appropriateness present to the community board, and the community board is the entity that is responsible for telling, notifying the community.
Okay. All right. Yes, would the architects like to respond to some of the comments that we've heard today? Yes?
Thank you very much. First, I want to respond just to the question about, about the air rights transfer. Both our attorney, Rich Lovell from Shelby Lovell, and the Landmarks Committee has reviewed all of this, and it is as of right, and there are no open questions or open issues regarding the overall air rights. Secondly, regarding the setback.
Commissioners, I'd just like to, let's make sure that the testimony is clear. The Landmarks Commission, it was not me, it was perhaps John Weiss, looked at an objection sheet. There was no independent analysis by commissioners, by attorneys here about whether this is as of right or not. The Buildings Department has determined, and there's no, there's no objection under the building.
That's exactly, we're not weighing in on the legality in terms of zoning.
Second, regarding setbacks, again, objections, it requires that it's above eighty-five feet or above the sixth floor, which is why our, our upper level, which is above the sixth floor, is compliant with those, with those zoning regulations, and as is everything else. Third, regarding visibility, the mock-up is there. Everyone has been able to see it. We've walked around, taken multiple pictures. We've walked around with Landmarks staff. We're showing you all the points where there is official visibility. It is quite possible that it is visible from upper stories. It is not visible from the street directly in front of the building, as you walk down. We've identified the moments where it is indeed visible, where you can see silvers of the building. Again, it's there, we're not sort of hiding things or anything, trying to cover it up. I encourage everybody to go down and look. The construct that's on the building is still there. Just in terms of the language, again, it is, it's a modern addition to a cast iron building. There's no doubt about that. We're very proud of that. We don't think that it should be sort of a continuation or an extension of the, of the historic language. We think that would be inappropriate. We think that many of the additions that are in the cast iron district are modern additions. Oftentimes, there are now modern additions, but nonetheless, modern, non-visible additions. We've gone through a number of exercises to make sure that while this is a modern addition, it pulls from the spirit of what's happening in the district, and at the end of the day, we're very, given all these things, very proud of the language that it will create. So, if there are any other questions?
Yes, Michael.
The several applicants referred to fins. Do you know what that's referred, what that, those comments relate to?
I believe, I believe they're talking to the sort of the window view, and the little jogs, the kind of sawtooth jogs. There are no fins or projections that come off of this building. In fact, we wanted to keep it incredibly tight. All the structure is not expressed, it is internal to the building. We wanted to keep any, you know, extra language, joints, whatever, that's minimal as possible. I believe what they're talking about are these shadow, sort of the shadow details that can cause the mess.
And just I want to ask the staff, you saw that, just for the record, you got, you toured it, and you feel that the, the visibility as described here was a fair description of what's, what's there?
Staff did tour the site. There are three sort of distinct vantage points, not to say that's the only place you can see the mock-up. For example, go back to the ones with the cones. For example, from one, if you go from Canal Street roughly where the two is and walk down towards one, you can continually see small portions of the mock-up. I would say it's fair to say in all cases it's disassociated from the building. There's been small bits and pieces from these different vantage points, but it's not to say that's the only place you can see it. If this was done with more of a cone of visibility study, that might clarify for how far you see it and how many places, but basically it's these three distinct points. Even with the zoomed-in lens, it's hard to see because it's a mesh orange on there, so I think you really have to study probably your handout, and you can pick out some of that to get a sense of it, but again, you do see it from other places along these routes. But in no cases from a directly across the street, perpendicular, you can see it, or from a patio, you do have to move at a greater distance to start seeing parts of that.
Okay, thanks.
But just going back to the views, they were all seem to be taken along this, what about the cross street?
Grand Street.
Grand, right, yeah.
Coming across Grand Street?
Yes.
I'll go back. Grand Street visibility is blocked. Let's see if we have those shots. You don't really see much on Grand Street because of all the buildings that are in place. If you look here on Grand Street, you can see, you're looking at such a skewed angle, you really, no matter how far down Grand Street are, you don't see it. And the same thing here, no matter how far down, because of the slope, you really just don't see it. You see the water tower. Water tower is certainly the defining element on the rooftop.
Well, one more point, Commissioners, in reviewing some of the testimony handouts, there does appear to be a vantage point that was not ascertained from being on the rooftop due to mechanical equipment and looking back towards it, which is a way to usually get a sense of what you're seeing. So a view, it appears from the east, looking back west, you do see some of the stair bulkhead and some of the addition, and staff did not identify that it's not part of proposals. That's, that's new information. We don't have an image of that, but it is part of the handout that passed around.
Right, because I think the handout showed some views that maybe were not documented in your view study that you should take a look at.
Can you please go to the building mass development page? Yeah. So in that diagram that you have on the upper right that says zoning setback envelope, it seems that the first level is considerably lower in height than, than what it is that you've proposed. Can you explain the translation between the upper right and the lower right?
The upper right here and the lower right?
And the lower right image. So the first level of your addition on the zoning setback envelope is, looks like it could be relative to the other image, it's, you know, the numbers you've given us, like eight feet or something, right? Am I right?
I don't believe so. I believe that it's actually based just on the zoning allowance, if you're able to build out to the top of the sixth floor or eighty-five feet. So this would be the equivalent of the top of the sixth floor. That setback is happening in the same place.
They're going down. They're not going up. They're digging down into the building. That's the difference in the top.
That's what's happening here. That's what we're dropping.
And they're setting back, which is, otherwise the zoning says you could go at the street line up to eighty-five feet.
Technically, from a zoning point of view, no, we're not pointing to the east.
No, sorry. One more time, go back. So, but the, but the top piece there is set back considerably more than the bottom piece here from the face of the building, right?
This piece?
Yeah.
This piece is this piece. It's set back to the same line. It's actually set back.
I know. My question is about this level. This level, correct? And how it is that it can be as tall as it is as close to the front of the building, given that image up there.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying. What you're looking at here is the, let's call it the roof of the sixth floor. What you're looking at here is the, let's call it the roof of the sixth floor. That is the roof of the sixth floor, right here. What you're seeing is the railing and the roof condition. You're seeing that piece right there. So, that level is at the same line as the level that you were seeing in the previous image.
They got, they got that volume by scooping out the building in the front from that upper image. It's not exceeding it. The reason that, I think that's...
You can see that here. That's all this gray area that's been shaved.
They scooped that out from that model.
Can I add to this? The, so, my name is Aris Graham from Workshop ABD. So, the lower plane there is a plane of eighty-five feet from medium street level below. That's kind of, that's a zoning regulation. So, that's what sets that cut, and twenty feet backwards. So, it's, well, it's actually eighty-five feet or top of sixth floor. So, when we introduce the sixth floor into the building, then that basically eighty-five, you know, twenty feet setback is basically taken down to the top of the sixth floor, which is the first top addition. That kind of explains a little bit the steps from the zoning envelope, what we call the zoning envelope, to kind of that's...
Right, I think if you see how much of the, the tower is exposed in the, since the tower is the same in both, so the gray cylinder, in the lower drawing, you can see that's exposed more lower.
Yeah, I see that.
Right, so you're right. Otherwise, if you just look at it, it looks larger, but it is, it doesn't seem like it actually is.
It's the same as, I think it's just, I think it's just the geometries, because the geometry is an angled plane versus a flat one is a little bit severe, but in terms of the actual heights, the heights are all compliant with the zoning requirement.
Yes, Chris?
Both ceiling heights are twelve feet.
Both ceiling heights are twelve.
Floor to floor.
Floor to floor.
About ten, ten, ten foot and change. It's clear.
Right, yes.
Question, there was a lot of testimony about notification of hearings and that sort of thing. Can somebody clarify?
Oh, yes, Mark did.
Yeah, I mean, the community board, the commission requires, it's not required by the Landmarks Law, but by policy, we require the CVA applications to go to the community board. The community board is the entity that notifies the communities about their hearing. We notify them, of course, about our hearing.
We did present to the community board last week, and they removed the allegation.
All right. Comments? Yeah, Roberto, questions? Yes?
Yeah, just a comment, but I think that it is, in terms of scale, I think that it's out of scale, but I could almost accept, if you really could see it from anywhere, but from looking at the handout, you can see it from several angles that aren't included in your presentation. So, I think that it is too big and needs to be reduced. And if we're talking about taking, accepting something that's two stories high on top of this building and what seems to me to be in another scale and not such an appropriate scale, I think then at least it should not be visible from anywhere.
All right. I, you know, just talking about the design, I think that, I know I'm open to the idea of having modern interpretations to enlargements in historic districts, but I think that, I think two areas do concern me. I think one is that the modern interpretation that you've chosen is not only in terms of material, and while you've taken some concepts, which is the rhythm of fenestration, and you've drawn from that, but I do think some of the angularity that you've chosen to do is interesting, but it, it's somehow, I think, I think the fact that there are two stories of it, I think emphasizes the fact that it actually departs from the character of the neighborhood. I think I'd be more accepting if this was a smaller addition and you still chose to use this architectural vocabulary. I think that once you've gone to the second story and then you, it emphasizes these planes, basically the roof planes tilting, I think that's, I don't know, I'm just not sure I completely feel that that can be drawn from just the rooftop additions. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, the, I just want to ask about the color of the planes there. It's a light kind of, and the material, because I'm sorry, but I wasn't here when you presented just a minute ago. And did you consider, why do you consider what looks like a lighter color versus the darker color? Do you think it's less visible or whatever?
No, it actually is a darker color.
Yes.
I mean, you know, this is obviously just sunlight hitting it, but, no, the idea is that it's a, it's a kinar-coated aluminum with a darker finish, something that would, that really does draw off of the kind of darker background languages and shadows and things like that, just things, sort of the darker tones that you can see on.
And, I'm sorry, what did you say the finish was?
It's a kinar-coated aluminum.
Okay, thank you.
It's similar to this, a little, I hesitate to show this because it's the wrong color, but it is a, on the aluminum panel. That's a...
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I think this is a very interesting and a good presentation, and I would find it more or less appropriate. I think that the visibility, this, this whole presentation kind of hinges on the issue of visibility, and we've had visible two-story rooftop additions. This is not one of them. I think that the visibility here, even in the worst cases shown by the, by the person who testified, the letter from the attorney, shows very small bits of visibility disembodied from the main building, telescoped in from long distances. And unless I'm misreading those images, which I'm sure were meant to make it as bad as it could be, I find the visibility of this to be, relative to other things that we've approved, very modest. Given that, the question is, what's the standard, right? If the standard is what's visible from the street, then, you know, the weirdest thing should be okay as long as, you know, within, I guess, certain bounds, as long as it, nobody can see it. And that distinction, I think, has a reasonable basis, because this is about the public's experience of it, not particular neighbors who live on high floors. So, and I think that this is far from the weirdest thing that one could do. I think it's very interesting. It's an interpretation of the rhythm and scale of the kind of iterative SoHo archetypal facade. Would it be better at one story? Would it be, would it be more appropriate? I guess so, but, I mean, again, the applicant has shown, there have been plenty of two-story additions. So, I'm, I'm just, I think that in the service of consistency, I think this is, this is an appropriate project. If they were to want to reduce the height of the floor to floor by a foot, if they were to want to look at the modification of the bulkhead so that it were less visible, I think it would improve it, but I really think that it's okay.
Diana, then, Fred.
Just, just to be, just to be clear, so, we are, it's appropriate for us to take into account all of the angles from the street, whatever they may be. It's not appropriate for us to take into account the visibility angles from elevated locations of someone's window and also the bird's eye view.
Right.
That we can't take into account.
That's right. And Commissioners, it's just that, this is here because, A, it's visible, and also it's two stories, and that, and the volume, this is question, sort of absent any visibility issue, is, is the bulk of this compared to what it's sitting on, is that, are we comfortable with that, with that bulk? Is it, is it, you know, does it turn the building into something that it's not historically? Does it, you know, so visibility is one thing, but also the scale is a second thing.
Right, and that's important.
Fred, yes?
Yeah, I want to echo much of Michael's comments and also the chair's comments about the appropriateness of adding new and of our time elements to the roof of buildings all over the city, frankly, but here in SoHo, we've seen a lot of it. Yes, apparently, it is a little bit more visible than your, than your presentation made it seem, and I think that the disembodied aspect of that kind of can make it relatively okay in my book. However, there seems to be consternation about the size and maybe even the double stories. So, I would be fine with it the way it is, I think, but in light of that consternation among some others, I think if you could reduce a foot out of each of the floors, you'll still have an acceptable and very habitable, very marketable space. And if you could somehow reduce the bulkhead, I think that back bulkhead seems to be extraordinarily high and the most visible part of it. Otherwise, I thought the presentation was excellent, to the point, quickly established the point of view that you had, and to me, made a lot of sense about how this very unusual top actually was derived from the regularity of the building below it.
Other comments?
Yes. I would propose that it's not the height that's the issue relative to your point about bulk. It's really the relationship and the distance to and from the facade of the building. What makes it, would make it an addition and makes others additions has to do with their, the amount of space they take up on the roof, rooftop additions, rather than crowns or roofs on these buildings, new roofs. And so, I think, my position would be that if you were to modify this and affect the issue of sightlines from a variety of streets, it would be about pulling it back to what is the taller element face, and there, and then making it really resemble what you described as those, the detritus or the ancillary pieces like the glass rooftops that are, that are typical in the area, or even the tower, you know, the water towers and all of the other area. So, I think it can be that height, but pull it back.
All right, yes.
From what I understand from the other commentary, what people are commenting on in terms of visibility is the corner of the bulkhead from some of these other streets. You're not, I know this because I've walked it myself, you're not able to see this except in the moments we've shown it because we've walked along Grayland Green. So, when people are talking about the eastern view, they're talking about the visibility of this moment, only that moment. It is that bulkhead moment. And again, you know, in terms of what you see disconnected from the buildings throughout from any vantage point, you're going to see those, those languages, those architectural languages sort of popping up. In terms of, in terms of the sort of crown language, I think, I think what's interesting, and I, we can certainly try to zoom in on these another time, we do look at the two-story additions that are there, most of them, to be honest, are pretty horrible. They're, of all of these, there is not one good one, one that, as an architect, I would say I'm proud of. These are all sort of these banal two-story additions that are stuck affronted with, you know, sliding glass doors in the front of them. They're cheap, they're what somebody said are sort of the developer addition to a building. I, I think that they follow the zoning guidelines and no more. They don't go to any other greater length to sort of establish a connection or a language with the building. So, I completely, I hear what you're saying, but just in terms of the precedent of what the city's approved, while you can look at things straight on in an elevation, or certainly in rendering, for, yes, someone across the street on the roof, because we took this picture from the roof, would get this vantage point, the relationship of this face to this edge in reality is, I think, inconsequential. I think that it is something that, again, sort of academically, we can talk about, but I just don't think it's something that you would ever experience. The experience that people are talking about is that moment.
Okay.
Could that moment be modified?
To be honest, it, yes.
Okay, right. We'll talk about some of the things that you could possibly do to sort of get consensus, but Chris, you want to add?
Yeah, I agree with Fred's, Commissioner Blam's calculation of reducing by each floor by a foot and also that moment that...
Okay, all right. So, I think that, I think there's a general consensus that obviously, we've seen rooftop additions, rooftop additions are appropriate. There is an approach to try and reduce its visibility, I think, and I would agree with Michael on that, that a lot of the design choices have been done, in fact, to try and respect the idea of reducing visibility. I think that also there's a general consensus that having something modern is appropriate. It seems that the concerns have to do with the scale of this enlargement, and there are different, and the scale of the enlargement and possibly how it sits atop, on top of this building. So, I think there are different options that you could look at, which is, one is about reducing, do you need two floors? Do you need one floor? I think I had talked about whether reducing a floor. I don't, I'm not held to that, if you want to do two floors, as long as sort of it brings it down. There's definitely been discussion by several of the commissioners about the floor to ceiling heights as a way also reduce the bulk, and I think there's been one suggestion about trying to see how this enlargement, whether it can set back further and what would that mean to the scale of this enlargement. And I think finally, we'd like to look at just, obviously, the bulkheads at the back, which is what seems to pop out the most, and whether somehow it can be incorporated where you don't have it as visible as it is. So, I think there are some options, but I feel, you know, you should come back to us and, and try and address those. Yes, Mike?
Just, just as an appendix, just emphasize in the presentation, the views and, you know, where it's viewed from and all that stuff.
Right, I think that's also be helpful when you come back to give us sort of a broader area of views, and so, and also, like you noted, that some of the views are really of the rear, and, and then we could, we could analyze that as well. Okay? Are there any other questions? All right, so we can close the hearing.